Playing the flute and playing the trombone. Their favorite subject is history. I have a feeling it's because there's a really great history teacher at Bastrop Intermediate. And they're sixth graders, which means next year they go to Bastrop Middle School. And they go from being big men on campus to they'll be the younger ones on that campus for a little while. So they're making hay while the sun's shining. So these two young ladies are gonna lead us in the pledges. And if you would please rise and join us, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and indivisible.
They did a great job. Let's give them a round of applause. And Colin's gonna take your picture. All right, ladies, thank you. If you will please remain standing, we have Chaplain Grady Chandler, who's going to give us our invocation this evening. Chaplain Chandler?
It's good to be here tonight. Father, we come before the throne of grace. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, for everything that you're doing in our city. I pray the blessings of God upon this city. Father, coming in and going out, Lord, among. And Lord, I pray, God, that these minds that are here tonight, Lord, will respond to the things of God, giving glory to Him in all things. And Lord, we thank you for each person, individual, that stands for God in this city. And these people that we are looking at right now that represent our city, the board members here, I pray over them. I ask you to cover their minds, cover their spirit, God, and I ask the blessings of God be upon them. And thank you, Lord, for your blessings upon our city. Lord, I pray for the angels of the Lord to encamp around about this city. Lord, that we push against evil, evil intent. Lord, that whatever tried to work its way into our city, 'cause, Lord, we claim this place to be a God moment, a God place, a place, Lord, of peace, tranquility, a place, Lord, where we can call it home. And, Lord, a place of safety, safety, Lord, not only in our city, but God in our schools for our children. I pray the protecting hand upon our children as they go to school every day. And, Lord, protect us, God, from evil and evil influences well. And, Lord, we praise you, we give you glory and honor and thanksgiving and all things according to your will and purpose. And I pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain. We appreciate that. All right, we're gonna keep going. We're gonna do the mayor's report. I have a couple of quick things. I realized, as the other council members have talked about some of the meetings they go to, I don't always mention, and I just thought I'd mention a few that I've been to. The CAPCOG Executive Committee, the Clean Air Coalition, Diversity Board meeting, the taxpa-- nope, Colin, we're not there yet. The Taxpayer Town Hall that the Appraisal District did here in Council Chambers. Someone that I've known a very long time said they've lived here since the 70s, and it was the first time a town hall was held with the appraiser. And they were very appreciative of the city allowing that meeting to happen here in Council Chambers. Council, we had a budget meeting. We've had a BDC monthly meeting. I was at the quarterly community support meeting. And I also attended the TML Region 10 Legislative Update. I apologize, and I can't wait to hear-- I'm sure several council members attended Yesterfest, but I did not get to attend Yesterfest, but I did get to see my son get married. And my oldest son was married, and the ceremony was officiated by my youngest son, who broke his leg the night before. So there's a long story about that. And yes, that was a lot of stress for Mom. Council, I have two fabulous announcements that I want to share with you. One is House Bill 5012 today was placed on the intent calendar for the Senate for tomorrow. And that means that we very much expect that to pass, and then that will go to the governor. And House Bill 5012 is the qualified hotel project that'll allow us to get the state hot funds to build the Convention Center Hotel. And the other thing that-- yeah, that's very-- and we've been watching it, and we're glad it's out of committee. And we're running out of days, and we're needing to get it done. We also-- I got notified today that the authority to use grant funds has been granted to us for the CBDG grant out of the GLO, which all of those letters mean we're gonna be able to finish Agnes. So yay, that is a huge thing, and we're pleased to have that. It comes to me with all these, "You are responsible for making sure we follow up." And the good news as mayor is that's why you have a city manager and a CFO and a city engineer. But I wanted to make sure in this transition time that that's taken care of. But I did want to announce that Agnes was approved. Okay, Colin, now we can go to the next page. One of the things that I've done since our last council meeting is attend the TML Small Towns Conference. And that-- some of you may recognize Chuck Garner. He was one of the opening speakers. And to the left of the picture is Tito Rodriguez, who is the incoming TML president. And on the far right of the picture is David, and he is the current TML president out of Rockport. And it was great to see all those guys. And then the picture, they-- that group took a selfie. They had a blast on our Main Street, and they were the entire EDC board for Fritsch, Texas. And Fritsch is outside of Amarillo. And they asked me 497 questions, and I was pleased to answer every single one of them. And they were very impressed with Bastrop. And it was just great for them to be so involved. That conference put 200 people in town for at least one night, and many of them, it ended up being multiple nights. So that's a good thing for Bastrop, and it's always fun to show off Bastrop. Colin, if we go down, I also attended the Costa Azul ribbon cutting. And I'm cracking up. This is a family-owned business, and she's the manager and does not like seafood. But her husband likes seafood, so she said they are adding non-seaf food. So if you've been there and you don't like seafood, she said, "Make sure people know to come check out the menu," because she's not a big seafood fan. And then, Colin, let's go just to the right of that. Mayor McShan out of Elgin had her very first annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast that had never taken place before. So I went in support, and you can see that Councilmember Lee also attended. And I'm going to say, and Councilmember Lee will have an opportunity to disagree with me, but that was back on a weekend when it was raining quite a bit. And I said, I got the "What do you do?" And it was like, "I'm dressed. I'm on my way." And she was like, "Okay, see you there." So I think she was hoping I would say, "Yeah, it's raining too hard. We shouldn't go." But I think I guilted her into going. Above that, you'll see that I had, I think it was two or three classes of Emil fourth graders. That was a week ago. And then today, I had the rest of the remainder of the fourth graders. And they ask great questions. And one of the ones that came out today is, "If you make $150 a month, how do you have money to, like, you know, eat?" So it's fun to visit with them about that kind of thing. In the upper right-hand corner, a not very good picture of the police banquet. And I am quite certain that the city manager's gonna help Chief Stefanik take that up a notch for next year. It was very laid back. The food was wonderful. But I was sitting with the city manager. We were both wearing our police blue. And she was like, "Oh, no, we can do better than this at a party." So I think the police are gonna have a better party next time. And speaking of parties, if you go down to the bottom, Visit Bastrop celebrated their fifth birthday. Congratulations to the executive director, Susan Smith, and her team. It was a great time. They-- I thought she did a really, really good job. I was honored to be recognized as a Jim going the extra mile for Visit Bastrop. And then the picture of me with Councilmember Plunkett and his wife. The theme for the night was red, white, and blue, and we pretty well nailed it between the three of us. So that's why we took that picture. And then, Colin, if you go to the next page, you'll see that on Thursday, I will be at BISD graduation. And then that's Genesis in Cedar Creek. And then on Friday, BISD graduation is Circa and Bastrop. I do plan on attending the Best Breakfast on Friday. March for Jesus is scheduled for Saturday. And this weekend is the second weekend of Music Man. And the following weekend is the last weekend of Music Man. And I know if you were wanting to go this weekend, if you were wanting to go on Sunday, if you don't already have your tickets, they are sold out. And I've heard wonderful things about this show, and I'm looking forward to going on Saturday. Monday is Memorial Day. The city offices will be closed, but there will be the annual event that we always have on Memorial Day. It starts at 10:00 a.m. at Fairview Cemetery, and I'll be taking part of that. I want to remind everybody that next Tuesday, early voting starts for the runoff election. I just looked up and saw our recreation director, so I have to remind everyone that June 3rd is Bike Day. So we'll be riding bikes. I'm hoping that's right. She's-- maybe that's the wrong date. The normal first-week stuff, the Chamber Lunch, the Farm Street Opry. And I'm also planning on attending the Last Duel in Bastrop. Many of us know that the Bastrop County Bar Association puts on a play once a year and raises money for this scholarship. And they are a hoot and always well-done, and I'm looking forward to that. And you'll see, I've also noted that the runoff election is the 10th, and our next council meeting is the 13th. Council, I'm noting that there will be the election canvassing for the votes. There'll be a special meeting on June 20th. So we haven't set the time on that yet, but I want to make sure that you're aware of that for your calendar. So that is the end of the mayor's report. Councilmember Lee, I said your name a bunch of times. I'll let you go first and defend yourself.
I have no defense. She's absolutely right. Good evening, Bastrop. I just wanted to say first, welcome again to returning council member Kevin Plunkett. Again, congratulations on your election and our new council member, looking all pretty, Cynthia Sanders-Meyers. So welcome to the dais. I also wanted to congratulate Priscilla Ruiz and William Moore, who were elected to the school board. William is returning. And a very good friend of mine just got sworn in at Elgin yesterday as a council member. She ran a year ago and lost, but stayed active in the community throughout the last year, ran again and won. So a testament to never give up. She kept trying, and she stayed active while doing so. So congrats to her. I did attend the annual prayer breakfast. Wasn't as bad. The rain was not as bad as they said it was gonna be, but I was kinda like sipping on coffee, like, "Do I really wanna go?" So, yeah, it was a test. And so I had to go, but I was there real quick. So I enjoyed the Elgin Prayer Breakfast. I'm also happy that it was on a weekend so that I could go. But there was lots of music, great music, lots of prayer, and great messages for the Elgin community. So congrats on that. I attended the Taxpayer Town Hall, which I thought was informative as well. And I think, I hope it's something that they continue, because I think that it's important information that taxpayers don't understand and need to help with their taxes. I also attended the TML Legislative Update meeting and the TML Small Town Conference that was right here in Bastrop, so I couldn't pass that up. I, of course, was at the Leadership Summit yesterday. Really enjoyed having everyone in the room at the same table during that summit. I really think it's so important for us as a community, not just with those groups, but in all of our organizations, that we work together to make Bastrop greater. I think that's the way that we move forward with what we have coming toward us, to make sure we are all on the same page and in a place where we can discuss and compromise, because it does take some compromising and lots of discussions to make things happen. I attended the DEI meeting last night. Very happy to see the progression and the path that they're taking. And I am looking forward to the Pride Festival coming up soon, Farm Street, P&amp;Z, and the Impact Fee Advisory Committee's meetings this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I'm gonna shake it up a bit. Councilmember Plunkett?
Thank you. So I wanted to shout out to the Bastrop Opera House and Councilmember Lee for her singing and dancing on that one. That was a great show. We went to that on opening night. The Nancy Wood for her work with the--
Yesterfest.
Yesterfest. And it did, it turned out great. The, you know, it's gonna have to grow back into, you know, to catch up to what it used to be. And, but that was a good first step, I thought. And let's see. Oh, congratulations to City Manager Creo for putting that together last night, or yesterday afternoon. It's really good. We really need to get all these groups together, and that was a great first step of that as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. We're gonna have an update on that Leadership Summit. It's on the agenda, so I'm looking forward to hearing about that. All right, Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been one week tonight since I was sworn in, and it's been a wonderful, exciting week, and I look forward to many more. But since being sworn in last week, I went to the best countywide chamber mixer that was held in Smithville, which was wonderful to have all Elgin, Smithville, and Bastrop come together for that. And they did a great job in Smithville putting that on. And then I volunteered at Yesterfest on Saturday, and it was phenomenal. It was so great to have it back. It was many, many years ago that I volunteered then, so I'm many, many years older now, but I felt the excitement from what we had many years ago. So that was great, and thank you, Nancy Wood, also for that. Yesterday, I went to the Leadership Summit. And thank you, City Manager Creo, for organizing that. And I asked Cheryl and Jimmy, I said, "I've missed out on this in the past years. How long have y'all been coming?" And they said, "This is the first one." I'm like, "Yay, I get to go the first time with everybody." So that was exciting. And I'm here tonight. So that's my week.
Great. Well, welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. Yeah. Don't worry about that. Mayor Prochair Kirkland?
Hello, everybody. I'll start off by apologizing for my voice. I lost it on Friday and have been struggling to get it back since then. I'd like to start by congratulating all of the high school seniors that are graduating. Councilperson Plunkett and I both have seniors at Circa, and so we've gone to see our daughters graduate from Austin Community College with an associate's degree. And then on Friday, we'll see them graduate from high school. And I just, I want to thank the school district and the Circa administrators for offering a program like this, because it's kinda, it's pretty cool. Second, I volunteered at Yesterfest as well. I sounded like this. And I wore my Yester vest at Yesterfest, this yellow vest they gave us to, so people would know they could come and ask us questions. And, you know, I would point and, you know, I don't know, couldn't quite talk. And then last, I'd like to ask as many of you that want to to come out to the March for Jesus at the courthouse. I will be onstage playing bass guitar with my church worship band. Fortunately, I won't be singing, because I'm not sure I'll be fixed from this mess, but I'll be playing bass guitar. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
New button. I got to do the same thing that everybody else did, it sounds like. The Leadership Summit, I feel like we were thanking City Manager Creo for all the things that she's been doing, and that was one of the biggest things, I think, was getting that big group of people together and for the first time, and having city, county, BISD, the Economic Development Board, the Chamber, all in one room.
TechDoc.
Excuse me?
And TechDoc.
Yes, and TechDoc. And they were probably the most important ones in there, because--
That's why I wanted to mention them, Councilmember Crouch.
Yeah, we have a lot of traffic heading our way. So that was a great meeting, first one. We're gonna do more, and very pleased with that. The Parks Master Plan also, that's gonna be presented really soon. And I've been reaching out for biking recommendations. I think everybody knows I like to bike. There's a Bastrop bicycling group, if you didn't know. And I've reached out to them for some recommendations that we can put in for that. I wanted to recognize the Main Street Board and group for the table on Main, because it got rained out, and, not rained out, but rained on, and had to move it in a moment's notice to the Convention Center. And it was still a successful, fantastic event, so kudos to them. And let's see. And we've had a development group meeting, and there's been an unofficial groundbreaking for the property next to 969 and 71, Highway 71. If you haven't noticed, there are some trees falling down over there. So great that development's coming here and will help us pay for all of our infrastructure that we're putting in. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. All right, council, we're on the top of Page 2, City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had a few things going on in the last couple of weeks. You were all awakened by my text Friday morning, very early. Welcome to the life of a public servant. So got the outage up pretty quick before folks even realized that it was down. But we did notify BISD and all of our partners to make sure, you know, if the buses were gonna run, they knew that power was out in half the city. So kudos to BP&amp;L for getting that up, and Curtis especially, who answers my calls, even if it's at 1:20 in the morning. We're gonna talk about the Leadership Summit here in a minute. Super excited. There's been some follow-up conversations about what we discussed yesterday. As you're aware, probably, we had some staff changes at the EDC. The workforce development component, we are going to be discussing as to whether or not we continue that as part of the EDC, or perhaps improve our partnership with the school, Smithville Workforce, or some other agency whose sole component is workforce development, and we refocus our position on industry and job creation. We've had some Development Services staff changes as well. We will be seeking an Assistant Planning Director, and we just, and also a senior planner. The planning component is vacant. We did extend an offer to a senior planner. It was tentatively accepted. We're trying to work out some of the details, but I don't have anybody, per se. Have a Process Improvement Manager. You guys know Kay Sepicas. Kay has a teaching background, so it's gonna be really relevant for somebody who isn't in the development field to be able to write the things and be able to teach and reinforce all of the changes that are coming fast and furious. I don't believe you've met our building official yet officially, so James, if you'll take a stand. James Cowie comes to us with boatloads of experience, most recently in Seguin, has worked on the private side as a contractor himself, and then on the public side. So understands the real how-to of getting the job done. He's already been at some of the Development Services meetings, so has Kay and some of the other new staff. Our final person in customer service starts tomorrow. That is the staff we stole away from Bastrop County. Alondra starts tomorrow, and she is fully fluent in Spanish. And so tomorrow starts day one of training for that customer service division. I mean, we're diving right in. She won't even have a chance to put her stuff down. Still looking for space, so that's a separate conversation we'll have on a different topic. On the development front, planning and zoning will hear, will have a workshop, and will hear the first about a planned development district, sometimes also known as a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. And that is essentially, it was written out of the B3 codes before. It is essentially a creative tool that's allowed in development codes that allows you to be more flexible with the underlying base zoning. So, for example, when grid streets don't match, or other components in the code don't necessarily match that regulation, or that subdivision, or that plan, we have the ability to be flexible. So it is a workshop tomorrow. It needs to be posted in the paper, so I'm going to ask the Planning Commission to begin meeting with us every two weeks as we plan for workshops. They have asked for some educational training pieces as well. So we'll do workshop action, workshop action. That's the plan going forward. They also asked for a short-term rental discussion. Totally unaware about the state's regulation on short-term rentals and how we can perhaps slow them or prevent them in the city of Bastrop. And the short answer is, we can't, with some very slim ability, especially in the historic districts, but even then, very, very difficult. The state preemption also, in addition to the current discussion on the floor about cities not being able to stop additional dwelling units and having allowed them by rights, and not even being able to allow or reduce parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. So unfortunately, cities are on the losing end in the legislature this year, this session. And really, 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 one of the most vocal pieces has been the juvenile curfew law. I've had so many residents reach out to me about what they can do. And I said, "Well, it's on the governor's desk." Yeah. Might want to make some phone calls, but at this point, I mean, this is why it is so, so, so important to get involved. And I'm thinking for next session, we may be doing some town halls to get our residents involved and fully understand what that means. I need to be careful with that, because we're also not allowed to lobby, quote unquote. So it needs to come more from an educational component. So on the development side again, which happens to be the hot-button issue all the time, we did streamline the one-trade permit type. If you're gonna get a water heater, if you're gonna get an electrical plug changed out to 220, something like that, where it's really, you've hired somebody as a tradesperson, or you yourself are homesteaded and the law allows you to pull your permit, you don't have to call and get, you know, the 11 inspections removed. It's a completely online process. It's an automatic approval. It goes through. We perform a monthly audit. We see who didn't submit their insurance, whose license isn't current, et cetera, et cetera. So 41 submitted, one failed the audit. So I think that's a pretty good rate thus far, and we're still working to get that out into the development community. And so here's our, here's some of our main numbers in terms of who, what, and where. These 41 permits would have been something the staff would have had to touch in my gov. They would have been able to go in and remove a permit, I mean, remove an inspection because of the way the inspections were classified. So I'll run it on some time-saving crunches. We continue budget planning. The budget tool is out to some select residents, some more vocal residents, so to speak. And I've gotten a litany of comments on how to improve that tool, so we're going to be addressing that. We do have Juneteenth coming. You know, I didn't put Pride Festival up there, but Juneteenth, Pride, and the Big Bang are all events that are coming, fast and furious. And so we are always looking for volunteers and assistants to help put these events together and corral all of the folks downtown.
You might mention that Big Bang is including the Pet and Pal Parade.
Yes, super, super, super excited about that. Debbie Moore and Debbie Denny have partnered to help us bring back the Pet and Pal Parade. So I know my grandkids and my dog are super, super excited, and I can't wait. But we've got the Run, we've got the Pet and Pal Parade, and then the fireworks themselves and some music down at the park. Sit with, sit with, I don't even know my own name anymore. Rescheduled to the 30th of May. It's gonna be at Nuevo Mexican at 6:30 p.m., so come on out. And that's it. It was a full week, full two weeks.
Mayor, I have one quick question, if you don't--
Absolutely. Councilmember Lee?
How did you select the residents for the budgeting tool test?
My most vocal.
By name, huh?
I knew them by name. And they're not shy. They, I mean, they, the residents that I selected are very eager to help. They had a lot, like, today I received, one resident gave me 18 bullet points of what I needed to do this week, or this month, anyway. They are very involved, and I'm gonna say involved sort of on the back end. They are quick to point out, but also quick to accept, "Okay, that makes sense. Let me go tell the rest of my friends." So I know they're probably sharing it, because I've gotten probably no less than three emails from each one of them on different days as they're, as they're getting input.
So in all fairness, because she's protecting me, I made the suggestion of, you know, in, under this roof, we know a lot of the lingo, and we know several things, and we have a different perspective on it. And we really want this to be a tool that gets adopted. different perspective on it. And we really want this to be a tool that gets adopted and used by the residents. And so I said, I would really do like a little beta testing with folks and get their input from the beginning because if there's a few corrections that we can make that make it better for everybody, I think that helps us, it's a much better reflection on the city. Instead of, well, you launched this tool and it doesn't work and this didn't do this and that. And believe it or not, I had a few suggestions after I went through the tool, so.
No.
Yeah. So I really do think, and City Manager Correa is always open to, let's make it as best as it can possibly be, but I just think it'll be helpful as we go through the budget process. So. And then it's going to be launched to everybody. So it's not like they've got the secret sauce to the recipe. It's just, we're trying to fix it up and then it'll be launched and available for everyone. Any other, any other questions for the City Manager? All right, 4D.
All right.
This is kind of weird.
So as you know, the mayor is finishing up six years as mayor and more than six years as a public servant dedicated to Bastrop. So Representative Gertis had a resolution written in honor of her service, and I'd like to read that. It says, whereas Connie Schrader is completing her exemplary six-year tenure as Mayor of Bastrop in June of '23, and whereas in May of 2017, Connie Schrader became the first woman to be elected Mayor of Bastrop. She was re-elected to a second and final term per city charter rules in 2020. During her time in office, she has worked with the city council to improve the community's aging infrastructure, including streets and water systems, as well as its building regulation process. She has also helped to diversify the membership of city boards and commissions through her appointments. Moreover, she played an instrumental role in bringing the Art Institute of Austin to Bastrop. And whereas Mayor Schrader previously served on the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission for six years and she oversaw the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan, she was additionally involved with the community's Form-Based Code Initiative, helping to preserve the character of Bastrop's many neighborhoods. Through the years, she has also been active with the Bastrop Youth Career Day Program, the YMCA, and CASA, which she has served as a volunteer child advocate and a board member and officer. And whereas an honors graduate of the University of Texas at Austin, Mayor Schrader earned her bachelor's degree in civil engineering and subsequently became a licensed professional engineer. She brought to public service more than 25 years of experience in land development design, project management and construction, and business operations and facilities management. In all her endeavors, she enjoys the love and support of her husband Charlie, and she takes great pride in her children and grandchildren. And whereas through her visionary leadership, Connie Schrader has helped build an even more prosperous future for the citizens of Bastrop, and she may now take justifiable pride in all she has accomplished. Now therefore, be it resolved that Connie Schrader be commended for her service as Mayor of Bastrop and that she be extended sincere best wishes for the future. Signed, Stan Gertis, State Rep., District 17, State of Texas. So can we have a round of applause?
Thank you.
So I just want to add that at the mayor's state of the city, I did say these were some awfully big shoes that were going to be filled. And I don't even realize anybody has any idea how hard this woman works. There is not a time, not a place. There are even times when I go, oh my God, what did we miss, when I see your calling. And it is, it is really is a steward, not only of the public and of its resources, but of staff. So I do appreciate the work, the effort, the hard-earned kicks in the butt, you know, the tears, the sweat, all of the stuff that goes along with the politics. It's not easy being in my seat and it's even harder being in your seat. And as a female, oh my goodness, even worse. So I personally commend you and thank you for making the strides and having the leadership and the wherewithal, the chutzpah, to make the changes that we have going forward and how you're leaving the city of Bastrop.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I was really surprised and had no idea that Representative Gertis was doing that. I want to share with everyone that, you know, you, as Councilmember Meyer is knowing, that when you come on in May, it's nearly over. You are really doing a catch-up on that legislative session. But then in 1921 and '23, I've been fairly involved. And in '23, Representative Gertis has called me in advance of signing things. I want to understand how this impacts Bastrop. And he's just really done a great job. He's serving on the Rural Committee. His staff is available. And we're very lucky to have him looking out for us. So I appreciate all of his hard work. All right, we're going to go on to Item 4E. This is a joint proclamation that is between the county. It is already signed by Judge Klaus and I have now signed it as well. Whereas Memorial Day was first proclaimed on May 5, 1868 by General John Logan, and whereas Memorial Day has been officially observed in the United States of America on the last Monday in May since Congress passed the National Holiday Act of 1971, and whereas Memorial Day is set aside to recognize and remember the veterans who died fighting for our nation and the liberties we enjoy, and whereas we owe a debt of gratitude for the sacrifices of the many men and women who answered and answer today the nation's call for patriotic duty to those who fought and fight today with honor and valor to safeguard the American way of life. Whereas Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop join with people across the nation to embrace those and remember those who died serving their country during war and those who have died since their return home from war. Now therefore, we, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, and Gregory Klaus, Bastrop County Judge, along with our respective city council and commissioners court proclaim Monday, May 29, as Memorial Day in the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County, and ask all citizens to join in this observance. If you cannot make it out to Fairview, I understand that. It is a wonderful service. If you've never gone, I would encourage you to attend. And with that, I, one of the things about Memorial Day is literally remembering those stories. And we have kids around us that can't tell you who was on which side for the world wars. And we have an opportunity to pass on that history. Make sure you share the people who have served in your family, people that you know. It's, it's really important or history repeats itself. And I would just call on you to make sure that you do something besides just enjoy an adult beverage and eat a hot dog on Monday, but spend some time thinking about what that holiday is all about. I would very much appreciate it. Council, we're going to, right now, go to the consent agenda because we have at least one person that has worked all day and may want to go. So is there anything that anybody wants to pull off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wants to pull anything off of consent? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the May 9, 2023 regular meeting, May 12, 2023 pre-budget work, and May 16, 2023 special meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-82 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Ashley Henson to place five of the Planning and Zoning Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-83 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Rick Rivera to place one of the Parks Board as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-75 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the closure of Chestnut Street for the Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration Parade. Item 8E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-84 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing a task order number six to the existing contract for land acquisition services for the transfer lift station in Forest Main project with seven arrows land staff to, not to exceed amount of $150,000. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. They both said second, so that means I'm giving the motion to Councilmember Lee and I'm going to give it to Councilmember Plunkett. We have a few other ones and we'll see how that works out. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The votes unanimous. Congratulations to the two appointees and thank you for approving the consent agenda. Council, we're back on Page Two in the middle of the page, the much-talked-about Leadership Summit. Item 5A, we'll get a report from the Leadership Summit. City Manager, excellent idea. You've done a great job, but I know that you counted on a lot of folks with GIS maps and people to share stuff. So I want to also thank staff that worked really hard to pull that information together. And I'll turn things over to you.
Absolutely, Mayor. Couldn't have been done without our newest GIS analyst. And I don't, I don't believe Roberts, Robert Barron is our newest addition to staff on the GIS. He's probably, maybe six weeks in. And I think he's the best GIS person I've worked with, but I'm biased because he went to A&amp;M Corpus Christi, my alma mater. Worked for the city of Corpus Christi, although I didn't know him then. Worked for Bastrop County and has worked in Hayes County. So he comes with a wealth of knowledge and how he wants to see GIS executed, which really matches where I want us to go as a whole. And then Trey also. Jennifer had built some items in the maps and Trey, even though we were sort of working with chisel and stone a little bit, I mean, we'd have to like draw a map and KMZ and a Google map and then try to carry it over. And so we'd been really working from behind the eight ball. And it, it's amazing to me how much we've been able to do in such a short period of time and how those things are going to reap benefits. I mean, they will just reap dividends. I can't even tell you how much. I get super excited about maps. I'm kind of a map geek. But I will tell you that it was, this one was, I don't want to say it was rough, but it was a little bit different than I expected because there's still a lot of distrust among the entities. What are you going to do with the information? I don't know that I can share that information. I'm going to give you a portion of the information. We don't want our constituents to really maybe see that information and think differently. They may think that we already have a school site planned. For example, if I show you where we own property and are thinking about a school, that may mean different things to different people. And then, you know, conversely with the county, it's, I can't really give you where my, where our street work is going to be done because commissioners have their own street budget. And so things, things are fluid. I'll put it that way. I think once everybody saw the information, and really we were just looking for intersects, what are you doing and what are we doing so that we can not pay that dollar twice, right? We can save money for the residents in a number of different ways. And I've been doing this long enough and I've seen when it goes really bad and I see what it does to a city. Not so much to the elected officials, because you guys can go, oh, well, that's the city, but what it does to the residents and what it does to the burden of the taxpayer. There is a disannex, a disannexation bill in front of the legislature right now that is just going to make its way to the governor's desk. And it essentially says that residents have the ability to request de-annexation if they don't believe full municipal services are being provided, which includes, shocker, streets.
Yeah. Part of the debate was you can say, the street in front of my house is not in good working order and individually as a lot, de-annex and no longer pay property tax.
It's a little bit more convoluted than that, but, but it's, it is, it puts us on the defense. And so as we talked about streets and we talked about those things that we're going to need that are really, truly, in my opinion, quality of life. Corpus Christi used to be the sparkling city by the sea. I don't go down there as often as I should to see my dad, but I was there this weekend. And it just, it hurts my heart because I know for a fact our utility rates, because of the debt rate, had an automatic 6% increase. The debt model had an automatic 6% increase. Add to that a street fee that's being passed on to the residents on their utility bill. Add to that some drainage and the fees just, they just compound. And you get to a point where you have a per capita, you have a population that is, you know, probably more than 50% below the poverty rate. And, and you can see where it begins to hurt a resident in their pocketbook. I don't want to see us get to a point where we are so behind that there's no way for us to catch up. There's no way for us to catch up. And so if we can share the resources and we can share the information that works to all of our benefits, it is just the right thing to do. Lover's Lane, for example, Commissioner Hamner said, well, I'm going to straighten up. And I said, no, 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 don't touch it because we've got an EDC project that's going to rip up what you're exactly going to start. And we look so silly to the resident who says, hey, the county just fixed that segment and here you are ripping it up. Well, luckily, it's a different segment that he's touching, but it's that sort of interaction and intersect. And, you know, the developers are smart and they've got expensive attorneys and they will, they will take every opportunity to take what they can. It's human nature. They're looking for the best return on investment. And we need to balance that return on investment on what is in the best interest of our residents. I don't think developers are bad people. I don't think development is bad. I will be the first cheerleader for development. But I also understand from a residence perspective what that impact is and what carrying that on a residence back means. So moving forward, I'm hopeful that we get to a point where we're calling a special meeting for all of the entities because it is the telephone game. You do take some information back and if you weren't there to hear it or witness it yourself, is the message that clear going forward? And so I would challenge each of you to reach out to your counterparts in each of those entities and ask what we did good, what we could improve on, and what they would like to see. And so my goal is that we have this every six months, every quarter, every month. That's too soon. Things are coming fast and furious, but they, they also come at their own pace. And I don't want to have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting. That is, that isn't it at all. And I do want to break it up into certain segments. I think the mayor had a good point about, let's just talk about transportation this next time because it is, it is a big segment. And the map moving in and out and all of the icons on it, it was a little bit hard to follow. So we've got some good lessons learned and I think moving forward, we're just going to keep improving it. And, and I will tell you that there is not, there's not a whole lot of cities who work collaboratively, collaboratively with all of the entities to create a resilient city from within. And we struggle with that at the national level when I go to leadership, when I go to ICMA, and we struggle with that at the local level because every entity really is, it is a push and pull on resources. And we do work with one another. The, the school is passing a bond. Let's us not work on a bond. The school is doing this. Let's not do that. The county is working on this. We'll wait another year to put our bond in front of the, the residents. So to the extent of that kind of cooperation, we try to do that from a strategic. But to be in the room and say, let's write the ordinances so that we're sharing information. Let's write the ordinances. So in as much as the, the law allows that we're able to share a resource, I, I see nothing but good things for Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop.
Thank you very much. Really, just a great job. And make sure you send an email to Sylvia if you've got any suggestions. I totally agree with the six months. And I actually reached out to one of the entities this morning and the discussion was even like an 11 by 17 map, something solid. One of the things, the feedback that I got was, you guys are used to looking at that all the time. But I'd find out where I was and then the map was moving and I was trying to get my reference point back. So, you know, there's, but we'll all get used to it. One of the things that I was the most pleased about was, especially appreciative of Councilmember, or Commissioner Beckett, spending time talking about Campo and the Campo process and text dot because a lot of people think they know how those decisions are made, but actually knowing about it and learning things like TIFs and SKIFs and who votes and where things come from and what the matches is all very helpful. So I haven't heard anybody say that was a waste of my time. So thank you very much for that. All right, Council, we are moving on to Item 6A, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report. And Ms. Waldron is making her way to the microphone.
There we go. There we go. So our April report is still good news, general fund exceeding forecast, thank you. 12.9%, sales tax still a good, strong 9% over forecast, development fees. I did go back and look at that to see what activity occurred in development fees. We did get quite a bit of fees for the Pearl River Project in April, so that kicked that revenue up again. On electric, we are still running about 4.3% short of forecast, but I do think that that will eventually level off in the next couple of months. All other funds are performing positive. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Counsel Member Plunkett?
On the electric, is that a rate issue or a yield issue? Can you tell?
It's, yeah, it's not a rate issue, because overall, the budget is fine. It's just, when I have to, I put the forecast in buckets throughout the 12 months, so it really just depends if it was cold, if it was hot, if it was raining, if, you know, it's just.
Okay, so we're using less megawatts.
It's a forecast.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've had rain that we have, you know, think about, in years past, we could be boiling by now.
I don't think that it will end up being short total budget, but right now, the way the forecast is running, it's just short of forecast.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I think, too, what we forget about electricity now is that the advent of smart meters, we're not necessarily as wasteful as we used to be. Same thing happened to water revenues in my prior city when the install of smart, or water saver toilets and things happened.
I feel like I'm still the only person in my house that turns off light, and there's only two of us, so.
Well, I'm the only one in mine.
Yeah, and there's a lot more people at your house, so. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Waldron. All right, we're at citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. We have completed the consent agenda. Counsel, we're on the bottom of Page 3, Item 9A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-79 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an amendment to a dissolution agreement between the City of Bastrop, a home rules city, and Continental Homes of Texas LP, a Texas limited partnership, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just to give you an idea of where we're talking about, it's the Veridian Pid, or it's Valverde now. Prior to that, it was any EU communities when they established a Pid, became Veridian, now it's Valverde. What I wanted to point out here is, it will be expiring within the next six months or so. They've asked to extend that a couple of years, so that they can reimburse themselves for the infrastructure that they plan to put in here shortly. So, they're at a, they're near completion with their platting stages, we're just waiting on one last piece of property acquisition that should happen June 19th, so that we can put the water line in, allow them to get started, and then we should be in good shape. So, again, this is just extending that a couple more years to allow, and just so you know exactly what we're talking about, in the Pid boundary, the reason I pointed this out, you see the star there, the boundary actually covered both pieces of property, with an option in the development agreement to add this 10-acre tract to the, to the Pid in the future if they so choose. So, you're renewing it on both pieces of property technically. This is a much boring from the survey, but you can see a small piece of property there, not near as nice as the other map, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Jobe?
Yes, Mayor, I have one question.
Counsel Member Lee?
I have a dumb question. So, normally, I guess, we, when we assess fees, as people move in or tie on, they pay a fee, and that fee's based on a percentage or standard or whatever, and they get, they pay it each month, right? So if they, when they pay it upfront, how, how is the total fee determined? If they're gonna pay the fees upfront, how, how do we determine what that total cost is if no one's using the home yet?
Sure. So, and we'll go more into this in the next item, but essentially, they've established the boundaries that you see here for this public improvement district. As they build the sections, they'll have a true understanding of what that cost is. Then as they subdivide it, those costs are, are apportioned across all of the different lots. So, when they build sections 1, 2, and 3, if there's, I believe there's 400 lots in those sections, that cost will be divided across those 400 lots, and they'll continue to do that annually, every year. It'll come back here, and you'll see a service and assessment plan, and then it'll be adopted, and that'll eventually be spread out across the entire, all of the tracks. So, when I say those 400 lots, I mean, those 400 lots plus the developer who still owns, who still owns the remainder of the big track. So, they'll have to pay their portion as well.
And that will be a part of their closing document. They'll, they'll be told, you are in this Pid, this is what your fee's gonna be. That all has to be disclosed to them when they purchase the home, purchase the lot.
Right. And the way we had this particular agreement written was that it would dissolve after two years if they hadn't already began issuing debt. They don't plan to issue debt, they plan to spend some cash, and then they'd like to recoup that debt, once they have it built, they have a better cost. So, just makes things a little cleaner.
So, Mr. Jobe, Counsel, staff is supportive of this request. Mayor Protem Kirkland?
When are they planning to break ground?
So, they're a little nervous about the land acquisition. Again, I think we should take possession on the 20th, if I had to guess, somewhere between the 20th and the 25th of June. I would think they're ready to go. They have everything approved, we really just need to have them starting to move to final plat. I would say very soon, six months, one month.
Are they planning to wipe this land clean of trees?
No, they're not. Okay.
Any other questions? I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Crouch, and a second from Counsel Member Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Member Crouch?
Yes.
Counsel Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Counsel Member Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Member Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're on the top of Page 4, or as I like to call it, the last page. We're on Item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-80 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a reimbursement agreement between the City of Bastrop, a home rules city, and Continental Homes of Texas LP, a Texas limited partnership, for 399.9 plus or minus acres of land out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract 98, to the west of FM 969, located within the City of Bastrop. Extraterritorial jurisdiction is attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Same piece of property, just want to point out really quickly that those areas that you see in green are supposed to keep the trees. Not only that, along their cross-section, they'll add trees, so the ones that they do remove, they'll come back and add along all the streets. But essentially, this agreement is what we just talked about. Now that the Pid has been, the agreement to continue the Pid is there, we'll do the service and assessment plan, this allows those folks to get reimbursed. It's that simple. So, now, once they, its debt is issued, they'll be able to pay theirselves back for.
But they will be auditing those costs, correct? They don't get to turn in sliders at Roadhouse. It is construction cost inside the boundary, all of those documents are reviewed.
It is cost related to the public improvements only that we approve here at City Council.
Counsel, any questions? Happy to, Counsel Member Crouch?
I, I had a couple of questions, and the item number four, the dollar amount, where, where did that dollar?
Is it 95 million?
Yes.
So the 95 million is an overall estimate?
No, I'm sorry. The reimbursement, the 11 million 95,000?
That is, that is for the first three phases of construction that you'll see here. So the overall Pid cost, they expect it to be 95 million, that's just their estimate. It certainly could be less than that. But these three sections here that are approved, that's the, that's the cost of the infrastructure related to those first three sections.
Okay, I apologize, because those pages didn't come out on my packet, for whatever reason. Another question I had, were the improvement zones or areas? I just saw 1 and 1A in, on my packet, again, I couldn't open them, so is this, does that picture all of them?
This pictures the entire buildup, yes.
Okay.
It's the full 400 acres?
Yes.
That, that you're looking at?
So we're really talking about like here, here at the front. Right, so the entry, the entryway to the street, all the streets here, the water, the sewer, electric, the drainage.
Yeah, I, I kind of assumed that, so thank you for verifying that. And did they have any dates associated with each, each of the four zones that they're gonna do? Did they have dates associated with them?
They do not yet, those are, no.
They haven't bid the projects yet.
They have not.
So there's not a start, approximate start and stop?
No, I do suspect it'll be with the next few months.
Okay. Let's see.
And so, just, because I want to clarify, because I think we're maybe a little bit confused about a public improvement district. So this is not like a TERS, this is not where they're asking the city a reimbursement of anything. This is a public improvement district that is created on the faith and good credit of the city. We go out and borrow for improvements to reimburse the developer, but the developer pays us back at a percentage plus whatever we borrowed. So they're essentially revenue bonds. The developer puts all of the money upfront, and it is a, it's, it's sort of a reimbursement to themselves, but they are taxing each individual unit within that district boundary. They're created this early in the stage, because a normal Pid takes 51% of the property owners within the boundary to agree to tax themselves for improvements. In this case, it's probably one or two owners, and so they create the Pid, and they sign the documents, and they do all of those things. An assessment plan has to be equal, and then, you know, it's, they, they can't go and submit reimbursement for, you know, 2,500 Whataburgers that they donated to the Little League or something like that. It has to be related to that. And the city holds an interest, so if something goes bad, we're able to collect. So this is not a TERS where they're asking the city to give anything back. They, they're paying their way through it, through, for lack of a better term, support from the city through, I don't have a better analogy than a cosigner.
Right, and, and so if you own a home there, and you're like, wait a minute, why am I paying this tax, and I'm paying it to the city? No, you're not. You're paying back what it costs for the development, they've, essentially could almost, they roll a portion of it into the cost of the lot and the house.
Exactly, and they're called specials everywhere in the country, you'll hear them called specials, it's a special assessment, and they can only be used on certain things. And I bring this to your attention, because as we work through the 1445, it still has some kinks in it, the county has taken a pretty specific position on what they will or will not accept. The colony is not a Pid, it's a mud, but as we talk about improvements, like streets and things in a Pid, those things may be rolled into the Pid if certain things aren't being met, and it's not drawn to county standards, et cetera, et cetera. But there will be a special assessment to the folks in this property, and it's buyer beware when they purchase it, and most folks know it, and Connie's right, they can roll it into the pressure loan and pay off their assessment, you know, right away.
Counsel Member Crouch?
One more. And this is probably for Alan. Alan, I'm not familiar with seeing the, a no firearms entity boycott. Is that, and I know that a lot of this are just on every packet that we get, or every document that we get, I had noticed that one before, for whatever reason, is that?
Certainly, Counsel Man Crouch, there's a reason it's relatively new. Following the 2021 legislative session, new law went into effect that all contracts that we execute must do certain things. One of them is, the person we're contracting with must agree that they are not themselves boycotting in their investments against those who manufacture firearms. Similarly, there's another statute requiring that we only contract with people who agree not to boycott the nation of Israel, and then there are certain other things. And so it's relatively new, it's catching up on a lot of our contracts, but you're seeing it because it's a state mandate.
Okay, I, I didn't make that up then, I did, I thought I had seen it before, noticed it before, so I did.
And, and we'll have a debrief on the new things that become state mandate after this legislative session, so.
Okay.
Great question, though, thank you for noticing that.
I think that was it on my, on my questions. Thank you for pointing out the areas, because I was a little confused on that, and seeing that map now, that didn't come through, it makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Happy to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Lee, and a second from Counsel Member Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Member Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Member Crouch?
Yes.
Counsel Member Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Counsel Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we're gonna go into executive session, and it is 7:36. I have been advised that we do not need to go in for 10A, so that is pulled, and we will, it will be very short, I'm letting staff know, this is not gonna take very long at all. Item 10B, city council shall convene executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the interview process for an associate judge. It is 7:36, and we're in executive session. All right, it is 7:45, and we are out of executive session, and there is no action as a result of executive session, so we don't need to do Item 11, which brings us to Item 12. Counsel Member Crouch?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Counsel Member Crouch, and a second from Counsel Member Lee. It is 74, 7:45, and we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.